Good evening, members. Before proceeding with today's meeting, may I ask for your confirmation of your agreement that councillor Brian Ellis be appointed as the chairman of this eastern area planning committee for the council year 2016/17? Okay, that's agreed councillor Ellis, would you mind to make your way up to the dais?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for electing me as your chairman for the coming year. Can I move on to item two on the agenda and seek your confirmation that councillor David Els be appointed as the vice-chairman of the eastern area planning committee for collateral year 2016/17? Thank you very much councillor Els. Moving on to the usual pieces of housekeeping then, there are no plans for a fire alarm test this evening, so members and members of the public up there in the gallery, should you hear a continuously ringing bell, there could be a fire somewhere in the building, and we should leave it as quickly as possible, if I've green marked it, because it's there, there, and over here, and we gather under the canopy outside Waitrose. Could I ask members and members of the public, please, to ensure that your mobile phones are either switched to silent or switched off? And finally, members, we are being webcast, so could you please make sure your cards are plugged in so that you can be adequately heard on that media? Moving on then, item three, the minutes of our meeting held on the 20th of April 2016, is it your wish that I sign these as a correct record? Thank you very much Gary, I shall do that later. Apologies for absence Gary.
Yes chairman, thank you. We've received apologies from councillor Mike Band, councillor Jeanette Stennett, councillor Stuart Stennett, and councillor Val Henry.
Thank you very much. Any further declarations at all? Sorry, no, I just jumped ahead of myself, sorry, declarations of interest.
Thank you chairman, none received prior to the meeting.
Any late declarations, declarations members? No? Moving on then, questions by members of the public?
None received chairman.
Thank you, and then on to item seven, any relevant updates to government guidance or legislation since our last meeting? Peter?
Yes, thank you chairman, yes, I have one item to update members on, I have an update on the Planning and Housing Bill, which received royal assent on the 13th of May, and now comprises the Planning and Housing Bill Act. The Act includes a number of significant changes, however, I will just highlight the key planning matters, and will circulate a copy of the Act following this meeting for your consideration, if you're content with that. The key change is the inclusion of starter homes as a form of affordable housing. It is understood that new development coming forward will be required to provide 20% of these homes as starter homes, as an element of the affordable housing, and once relevant legislation is published to support these changes, we will have to move forward to accept these. Planning authorities will also be required to meet demand for customers' self-built homes by granting permission for suitable sites. I've dated you previously on the requirement to hold a register on the need against the customers' self-build housing legislation. It creates a duty for local authorities to hold a register of various types of land, with the intention of creating a register of brownfield land to facilitate unlocking land to build new homes, and giving housing sites identified in the brownfield register local and neighbourhood plans, planning permission in principle, and providing an opportunity for applicants to obtain permission in principle for small-scale housing sites also. In terms of neighbourhood planning, the Act seeks to simplify and speed up the neighbourhood planning process, and to support communities that seek to meet local housing need and other development needs through the neighbourhood plan process. It will also give the secretary of state further powers to intervene if local plans are not effectively delivered. It extends a planning performance regime to apply to smaller applications. It also picks up on putting the economic benefits of proposals for development before local planning authority committees. The government will also carry out a time-limited pilot on competition in processing planning applications, which will be fully evaluated before any full implementation. The practical implementation of the Act will now be taken forward, however, at this stage I cannot provide a detailed timetable, we will therefore await further announcements regarding the implementation, I will of course provide a further update on this once it is received. I'm happy to take any questions, and I will endeavour to answer those, given this is a relatively new piece of legislation. Thank you chairman.
Thank you very much Peter, Mr Ballin.
Thank you chairman, on the register for brownfield sites, does that mean all developed sites, or all sites that are no longer in active use?
Thank you chairman, yes, it will comprise any site, whether it may be redundant or in a current use, if it meets the definition of previously developed land, it would be classified as brownfield land, and therefore that would have to be included in the register. So hopefully that answers...
So that might include my house then?
Chairman, just to add to that, that there is an additional assessment to make in relation to whether the site is deliverable in terms of the planning delivery criteria for the Schla, so there's a synergy there with sites that might be identified in the Schla, and those on the brownfield register. There is an additional element which Peter has referred to, that's going to come into force, which is provision of permission in principle, where most sites on the brownfield register will be capable of being granted this new level of planning permission, without the need to actually apply for planning permission. And in fact, this council has been nominated as a pilot authority to try out the preparation of the brownfield register, and we're going through the process now of experimenting as to how this register may be put together. So there's a report that's going to be coming forward to the executive in due course, advising members that we're going through this process, and bringing them up to date on this, but it won't have any weight at this stage, it will be a forerunner of the formal process coming into effect. Thank you chairman.
Thank you Elizabeth, any other question, Mr Gray?
Just a quick one on the question of the starter homes, I think Peter you mentioned 20%, is that 20% of the amount that are affordable homes have got to be starter homes, or is it 20% of the total homes?
Yes, thank you chairman, thank you councillor Gray, our understanding it would be 20% of the overall homes provided on site, so on that basis. Thank you chairman.
Any further questions members? No, let's move on then, we're on to item eight now, on the applications for planning permission. Should there be a need for a site visit, you'll see in under 8.1, this would be held on Monday the 13th of June, at a time that we would agree at this meeting. Moving on then, to the one item on the agenda. Item A1, WA 2016/0177, change of use of agricultural land for sighting of caravans for occupation by agricultural workers, together with associated works at Chuesley Farm, Chuesley Lane, Gollumming, as amplified by emails received on the 18th of March, 24th of March, and the 29th of March 2016. Tim?
Thank you chairman. Members, the site is located here within the Chuesley Farm complex, and under red is the actual application site. This site location plan is slightly out of date, as opposite the site is the new residential development on the former Wood Hospital site. Here is an aerial photograph, really just to show you, the application site is actually here, part of the existing farm complex is also within shot, but also shows you the existing caravan accommodation on the site itself here. Proposal itself, the applications for sighting of 25 caravans for accommodation for agricultural workers at the existing farm complex, the caravans will be sighted on hard standing here, as well as the grass-seated area to the south here. The proposal includes a number of landscaping proposals, including retention of existing fence along the west boundary, additional tree planting to the north, and retention of hedging along the east and southern boundaries. The caravans will be sighted at a minimum two metres from boundaries, three metres separation between each ends of caravans, and six metres separation between side elevations of each caravan. A plan is sought via condition eight, which would confirm the final layout of the caravans. On my site visit, there were some existing caravans on the site, these however were not occupied, but stored there at the moment. This is a view looking north from within the site, from the southern part. You'll see the rather unmade ground here, of earth, and this is the area for the proposed grass seeding. Again, view west within the site, that is the existing fence I mentioned earlier, along the western boundary, beyond is a tree belt where it banks down to the road. To the east of the site, on-site visit, polytunnels were up, which actually were, you can see them on the aerial view as well. View south from north of the site, this is the grass area to the north, where there would be some additional tree planting, there is an existing tree belt here as well. In terms of some issues with this application, I draw members' attention to the matters of judgment on the right-hand side of the screen. The site is within the green belt, and members will note that officers consider the proposal to be a form of inappropriate development in the green belt. However, officers consider there are the very special circumstances that are demonstrated in this case to allow the proposal. Visual amenity in the area of great landscape value, officers are satisfied the visual impact of the proposal would not result in visual harm to the landscape or local rural area. A number of measures are included which would help contain the visual impact of the proposal, including the landscaping, tree planting, and also the painting of the caravans green to match the existing caravans at the existing caravan site. Impact on residential amenity, the proposed caravans will be sighted at good distances from new residential properties opposite the site across the road. Officers are satisfied that the proposal would not cause material harm to the amenities of these residential occupiers. These of course are matters of judgment for members to take this evening, and therefore draw your attention to these relevant sections in the committee report before you. I turn members' attention to the update sheet, page six of the proposal, really just to confirm that the caravans will also be sighted on the grass-seeding area to the south of the existing hard standing. I've also summarised there for you the specific comments from the Rambers Association, and officers' response to that. We are also proposing an amendment to condition two, just to include the grass-seeding area within this condition. And on the original update sheet sent round by email, there was an error with the removal of the section one six agreement in the recommendation, however, I trust before you this has been amended to include that. Therefore, chairman, officers' recommendation remains as set out on the update sheet, that permission be granted, thank you.
Thank you very much Tim. This of course is subject to public speaking, and we do have three speakers, Mr Biggs, councillor John Graves, and Mr Kay. I assume the process has already been explained to you, that you have the appropriate four minutes, after three and a half minutes you get a yellow light, having already started with a green light, if you're still talking after four minutes, you will get the red light, and I will give you a couple of sentences just to wind up, and then we have to move on. Could I therefore invite firstly, Mr Biggs?
Hello there. This is probably the last man on the planet I would want to upset, actually being a six-foot-two vegan that lives on berries, so soft fruit people are just my favourite kind of people. So it's got nothing to do at all with the business, we moved in and the business was obviously established, that was one of the things that attracted us to the area in fact, was its beauty, we formed an amazing community in the clothes where we live, in the cul-de-sac. And then as the years progressed on, we've suddenly become aware of, I guess because we've had the doors opened more, of this never-ending thundering stream of Arctic lorries going in, and great big trucks with aggregate, and the way that the building, or the garden of our particular cul-de-sac is designed, which sweeps down onto Chuesley Lane, means that if one of the big Arctic drivers has to stop and give way to another vehicle, he's sitting three foot above the bottom of our garden fence, watching my daughter playing in a paddling ball, or whatever else is going on in the garden, so we've kind of come aware that, actually we hadn't quite anticipated that this kind of lovely thought of being able to walk through the lovely community path through the farm, was actually going to have a bit of a downside. Now, I can accept that that's the way it is, that's the way it's been, that's the approval that's been given. The noise from that, during the last week or two, there's been periods when there's been maybe five, six, or seven very large lorries rumbling outside of our gardens, backing onto our gardens. They start at quarter to seven in the morning, I was out for a run at half-six the other day, and at quarter to seven, a great big white lorry came swirling through to go up to the farm. And they can go on till ten o'clock at night, there's a mixture of other vehicles that go trundling past, some of it's very quaint, and some of it makes you feel great that you're living in such a lovely rural active place, but there is a kind of a limit, and I guess, you know, the objection that we have, and I'm speaking on behalf of our street, and we have formed a wonderful community there, is we kind of accept that it was there before we were, and we have to kind of live with that. The notion that this business has to be expanded in order to survive, and if that is the basis for this application to cite 150 people that will be living just beyond these Arctic lorries that are parked outside of our back garden, personally I find it extraordinary that it would even be considered, and purely because they've got better ways of growing crops, if the greengrocer in Gollumming found an amazing way to sell more apples, would it be conceivable that he could put an application in and assume to get it granted, that he could extend his shop front up Bridge Street, and maybe around the corner here, because he's got a new way of selling apples? How good is the technology going to get producing blueberries, that you have to keep adding more and more and more people? And if that's actually going to threaten the business, then the business must be fairly unstable anyway, and maybe the way to deal with that is to become more dynamic, and more effective at producing what you produce, and not just keep bringing in more people, which is going to bring more lorries. Chuesley Lane is not capable of coping with the lorries that are there at the moment, in fact it's not really capable of dealing with anything. When I drive my daughter to school in the mornings, it can be quite terrifying, there will be a serious accident in Chuesley Lane, the road narrowing was a daft idea, because people speed up when they come out of it, they swip around the bend, the signs are rubbish, someone will be seriously injured on that, it would be your responsibility, in my view, that if that's caused by farm vehicles, then you have the opportunity to make sure that that didn't increase, rather than decrease. Loads of other things on here, but I feel like I'm on just a minute, so I'm going to have to wrap this up fairly shortly. It affects our privacy, there's fires, we can hear noise from talking just over the road, because of the nature of the valley outside the bottom of our gardens, the noise does carry, we hear everything, there's going to be noise from those people, it's unacceptable, don't approve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Biggs. Councillor Graves?
Thank you, good evening, Mr Chairman, councillors. Councillors will remember during the Milford Hospital site application for 140 homes, that Surrey highways had to be recalled to try again to come up with an acceptable traffic mitigation solution for upper Chuesley Lane. Improvements to this very narrow, high-sided lane have done nothing for pedestrians, so frankly we are astonished that you are being encouraged to ask another 150 people to have to walk up it when they want to go to Gollumming. We are now talking about 600 people without cars at the farm, just visualise this. Previous applications for caravans at Chuesley have required a travel plan by condition. There is no transport assessment included with this application, nor any mention of a travel plan in officers' recommendation. The main purpose of this application is to enable the ratcheting up of fruit production from its already very intense level by another 50%. History shows us that inevitably this will then result in applications for more buildings. 50% more pickers equals 50% more fruit, equals 50% more packing and storage. With the grubbing up of the one remaining gooseberry field last year, the farm no longer grows anything in the soil, everything is grown in a coir or other compost which is trucked in, as are truckloads of packaging, as are the fertilisers and even the bees for pollination, as are the hundreds of tonnes of builders' rubble being used to create hard runs around the polytunnel fields. Mr Kay says that bussing workers is inefficient, but he doesn't actually rule it out. We know that it has happened in the past, and we have no reason to believe that it will not happen again, particularly as one of the company's new glasshouse sites near Chichester has no space for caravan living. Even now, the amount of heavy traffic in and out of the farm is way, way above the 494 visits per year quoted in the transport statement which went with the previous caravans application. Officers acknowledge that this proposal is inappropriate in planning terms cited in green belt and AGLV. They say there are very special circumstances which override this, in effect that the farm must expand to survive. This is patent nonsense. Operating at the current already extremely intense level has proved so profitable that the company has been able to double the number of its farms in the last few years. Officers also assume that checks and balances can be maintained by conditions in section 106 agreements. The planning history at this site is now so convoluted that this is simply no longer possible, and to a large extent, the farm is therefore able to do exactly what it wants, rather than what it is actually required to do. For example, planning enforcement had to become involved in recent years to ensure the cutting of windbreaks to agreed heights. The farm regularly breaks the polytunnel agreement by taking them down late and putting them up early during the winter period, and as far as we're aware, the polytunnel sighting protocol has not even been submitted, let alone agreed, for the last two years. Allowing further expansion of this enterprise is therefore not only unsustainable, but I also suggest uncontrollable. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and our last speaker, Mr Kay.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Whilst many of you will know the farm, I am aware that a number of new councillors have been elected since we were last here, so we'll briefly provide some background. Chuesley Farm has been growing crops and livestock for hundreds of years, over the last 13 years it has developed into one of the best fruit farms in Europe, and has often been used as a benchmark for the industry. The activities of the farm relating to biodiversity and pollinators were recognised by Waitrose in 2014, when it was awarded Waitrose demonstration farm status, ahead of all other fruit farms in the UK. At Chuesley we grow soft fruit for the top-end supermarkets that demand the best available produce for their customers. Every berry that we grow has to be picked by hand, to ensure that it reaches our customers in a condition that delights them. No form of mechanisation is available to us, so we are totally reliant on the availability of sufficient skilled pickers to harvest the fruit. The welfare of our workers is critical to the success of our business, and as such all have to be accommodated on the farm. Here they live happily, and over 80% of them return to pick in following years. The current mobile home site has been the seasonal home of our workers since it was granted temporary planning permission in 2008. I can confirm that we've received no complaints relating to the accommodation of our staff on the site in all of the time that we've been there. I sincerely believe that we are regarded as good and responsible neighbours, and as positive members of the local community. Confidence in our operation was noted when this temporary permission was made permanent in 2012. The application in front of you is critical for the continued operation of Chuesley Farm. I must stress that this accommodation is required now, in order to pick the crops that are currently growing on the farm, and not just something that will be required in the future. Production at Chuesley has grown significantly since the original mobile home site permission. The small blueberry plants we planted have grown into large bushes, resulted in the annual production of more than a thousand tonnes more berries than in 2008. The scale of this growth is better understood when you consider that 1,000 tonnes is 1 million kilos, or over 6.6 million punnets of fruit. Every one of these punnets needs to be picked on-site, by hand, by trained pickers. The number of extra pickers required has been independently audited by experts appointed by Waverley, who have confirmed that extra accommodation is definitely required on-site for the continued sustainable operation of the farm. We have researched other accommodation options elsewhere, but none are available. Even if they were, this would create 144 extra coach movements per month on the local roads which have already been flagged as being insufficient. The specific location of the mobile home site on the farm has been chosen as it is all but invisible within the landscape, a fact that has been confirmed by a full landscape assessment. As previously, we have agreed to paint the caravans a dark green colour, which is more conducive to the rural scene. The site has been judged to pose no material harm to the residential amenity of those living nearby, due to the distance and the established trees and bushes between the proposed site and the nearest dwellings. So in summary, over the last 13 years, Chuesley Farm has become an important part of the local community, with significant and developing links to the education of young people within our and wider communities. Chuesley Farm is a benchmark for high-quality horticulture and the encouragement of biodiversity in the UK. The standards of management, accommodation, and welfare are regarded as being the best in the industry, and have been assessed as such by external bodies. We have an excellent track record of delivering what we have promised to you as councillors over the years, and we intend to continue to do this in the years ahead. Independent experts have confirmed that this accommodation is required to maintain the sustainability of the business. It has been judged that this proposal will have no negative impact on residential amenity or the landscape. The application satisfies all relevant planning tests, and is supported by officers, and no alternative really exists for us. I sincerely ask you to continue to support us as an important farming business in Waverley, and grant us planning permission for this critical accommodation on our farm. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much, Mr Kay. Members? Mrs Ellis?
Sorry, somebody has to go first, I suppose. I've been a councillor and a member of the planning committee for quite a number of years now, and during this time I have considered, or been part of, of the committee that has considered a number of applications from this particular business, and I have been on a number of site visits as well. I have absolutely every reason, I think, to believe that it is a very well-regarded business, and highly successful, and I actually feel that the application before us, I am in favour of, because I see it as a natural progression of the business. However, having said that, and I'm not sure whether it's actually... However, having said that, and I'm not sure whether it's actually appropriate or not, and I would appreciate your advice, I was very impressed by Mr. Biggs's eloquent description of the situation that he and his neighbours actually have to experience on a regular basis. Now, Mr. Biggs was very honest, that the business was already there when he and his neighbours moved into their properties, and so they accepted that, but do we actually, are we in a position to suggest that whilst the application for me is acceptable, the impact that it might have on the neighbours is sufficient to, for us to actually really consider whether it should be refused? The application for the, for the actual siting of the caravans, the number of caravans, I'm comfortable with, but I'm not comfortable with the impact on the residents in the area. It doesn't appear to me that we actually really know how many lorries and vehicles are accessing the site on a daily basis, but it would appear that this is causing concern to, to residents, and I wonder whether that is a consideration, certainly something that I would take into account, but whether perhaps we should have a better understanding of the number of vehicles visiting this site on a daily basis, and I would perhaps cite Dunsfold Park, where they have a limited number of vehicles that can visit the site, access the site, on a daily basis, and that perhaps in view of the continuing increase in the size of this business, we should be considering that for this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Ellis. Mr. Byham?
Thank you, Jim. Councillor Ellis went into the areas that I was concerned with. Mr. Biggs, his presentation, which was very well said, and, and from the heart, obviously. I identified areas that I didn't understand in terms of traffic problems. I mean, I think the siting and the choice of, of the position of these vans is as reasonable as we're gonna get, and there clearly is plans to screen it well, and we must make sure, and I'm sure somebody else may talk about this, that any screening that is provided is adequate and substantial there, so that, so that they are screened from the public. But the fact of the lorries and the movement is not part of this application at all, but nevertheless highlights the problem that is created by our local business. I wasn't aware of that at all, I go there fairly frequently in the area, I have to say, I've hardly ever seen a lorry there. Clearly, they are coming, and clearly they are causing concern for new residents in buildings, in, in new homes which are very close to the road. And if I remember rightly, the actual, I, I may be wrong in, in understanding exactly where these lorries are parking, and exactly, it's adjacent to the houses, but there was an area there where at one stage, Surrey highways were gonna do away with all the parking along there, and, and grass that side area, which was outside parking. In the end, in my view at the time, did the sensible thing of actually re-tarmac-ing and making it a, a suitable parking area, but if that's causing problems, then we clearly must ask the applicant if, if the applica, application is agreed, that they find some level of control over their, their visiting vehicles, either by taking them on to the site earlier, that is, not to be parked outside the site during long periods and creating problems, and if these refrigerators units need to be running their, their engines for longer periods, I don't, or perhaps I'm wrong, but again, are they able to switch off for periods rather than just keep them running, as we have a requirement for all sorts of vehicles in our town centres to be quiet and silent wherever they can be. The only other point that I want to make with regard to, at this point, is with regard to the designation of what these mobile homes or caravans are gonna be. In the application description, it says occupation by agricultural workers, and yet within the actual documentation, it doesn't talk about, call them agricultural dwellings, where the existing caravans are called that. Does that put us in any danger that at some stage, when the business decides to change route or whatever, that we would then be in a situation where we would wish, we have to accept the idea that these dwellings, as they sta, as they're being proposed, change to holiday homes or whatever? So that is a concern that I have, and I would be interested to hear what the answer is about. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Byham. I do believe, in fact, that there is a condition, an existing condition as regards the caravans, that if they cease, the need for them is ceases, they have to be removed, but perhaps the officers could confirm that, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Just, and thank you councillor Byham. Firstly, in terms of who would occupy them and the manner they are, they're not dwellings, they're, they're mobile homes, caravans as such. And condition four, on page thirty of the agenda, says the occupation of the caravan, caravans hereby permitted shall be limited to persons solely working as seasonal worker in agriculture at Tewseley Farm. We're also proposing a section 106 league agreement which follows similarly to what they've had previously, and I won't read all the covenants on the current 106, but in effect, that requires them to be, caravans to be removed within three months, them ceasing to be in, in use or acquired. The caravans are required for agricultural purposes only, and within every five years, they will provide at their expense an agricultural needs assessment to demonstrate the continued need, so that's what we've, another point we'll be looking to secure. We also have a covenant in that, that if any of the mobile homes are removed in accordance with the, the obligations above, that the site and all necessary supporting infrastructure, so drainage, electricity, is also removed from the site, so the section 106 gives a stronger position on that. And in addition, any temporary buildings are also removed associated with the caravan use, such as the laundry type, porter cabin type structure and things along those lines. So the section 106 gives us that sort of element of control over that. So hopefully that covers the, the question on that point. There was other points raised with regards to the highway impact. I've obviously consulted in terms of the actual likely movements, the county council. We don't have a specific figure, the increased movement as a result of this, specifically as the caravans, which is what we're considering, and we'll see the increase in the provision or the growing capacity of the site and productivity is something that we can't necessarily control, because they can, they can increase what they're growing on-site, it's not expanding, it's just making better use of the land, and that's not something we necessarily control. There is an existing travel plan relating to the site, site-wide, which controls that. I heard some comments from the speakers about the times of delivery and things like that, and I think that's a matter outside of this application, which we, we might need to look at from a separate issue with our enforcement team if there, there is a complaint along those lines, and, and look at it from that point of view, but I think that sits outside the remit of what we're considering on this application. And hopefully that picks up on all the points, I don't know if Catherine, Catherine had any, but no. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Hope that answers your questions, Mr. Byham. Thank you very much. Mr. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Firstly, on, on highways, of course, the county highway authority have raised no objection on the basis of having assessed the further traffic movements, and are satisfied it will not have any material impact on the safety and operation of the joining public highway set out on page nine. I listened intently to what Mr. Biggs had to say, I got the impression, and I may be wrong, that he wasn't actually saying lorries were parked outside where he lived and so on, but that the, that they were stopping to allow other traffic, and at that stage, they were sitting there on the highway waiting for other traffic to pass, but be that as it may, whether it was parked or not, that could be attended to, as, as officers have said, by, by looking at the traffic plan and seeing if that needs to be adhered to more strictly. I have to say, I'm slightly, I'm confused by the fact that under the council's agricultural consultants, at the bottom of page nine, you know, the planning application is for siting of caravans for occupation by agricultural workers, then at the very bottom of the page of nine, it says, however, the application is for residential rather than agricultural use, albeit that the occupants of the caravans will be seasonal agricultural workers. Now, I, I don't understand that, you know, are they not agricultural workers, or are they residential? They're residing there as agricultural workers to carry out agricultural work during the season, and therefore I, I, and of course, it was on that conclusion that it, that it said we needed very special circumstances to overcome the harm caused, so it's an important issue as to whether these occupants are residential or agricultural, and I would like some explanation of that, but I am satisfied on, on the report that the siting of the caravans and the conditions, the conditions particularly that, that they will, the workers, agricultural workers or residents, will only be allowed to be there if they're working on the farm, and the point that I, I fully accept is that if the farm no longer requires so many caravans, they've got to remove them in accordance with 106. But I would, I would like some clarification, just, just out of curiosity really, as to why this is residential, not agricultural.
Thank you very much. Catherine?
Thank you, Chairman. The permission that's being sought is for the siting of caravans, they are not in themselves a building, so the application is the change of use of land for the siting of caravans. It therefore cannot be a building for agriculture, so in that sense, it falls outside the exceptions of green belt policy, and very special circumstances are required. They will, of course, be occupied on a residential basis, but that use is certainly ancillary to the agricultural use, if that helps at all. Thank you, Chairman.
Are you happy with that, Mr. Goodrich?
Yes, as ever I will be, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seeburn?
Thank you, Chairman. Let me start by thanking Tim for the clear report, and I know a lot of work has gone into preparing that. Based on the submissions from Waverley's agricultural consultants and by Natural England, I'm, I'm comfortable with the, the overall intent of, of this application. I was very pleased to see condition four, which addresses, or seeks to address some of the local concerns about the accommodation becoming permanent residences rather than seasonal housing, and also the, the risk that Tewseley Farm may become a hub for labour which can be housed and bussed to other agricultural locations in the region, so, you know, providing section, condition four is rigorously enforced by Waverley, these two major cons, causes of concern will be managed. Like councillor Byham, I've been down to that site reasonably regularly over the last twelve months, and was totally unaware of the, the traffic issues, which makes me wonder, you know, if, if both of us haven't seen the problems which clearly exist, then it's highly unlikely that Surrey have been there at the right times to see these problems as well, so I would encourage officers to think about how that might be addressed in, as a broader issue for the operation of the, the farm. The one question I'd like to ask of the officers is actually, how do they propose to enforce condition four of this application, given that we're hearing from the, the parish council that there are, there appear to be instances where previous planning conditions have not been strictly adhered to? The reports in its condition seeks to, to address the concerns, previous reports will have sought to address concerns as well, but clearly, it's not adequately happening, so it would be interesting to hear how the officers propose to ensure that what they're recommending will actually happen. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr. Seeburn? Officers, any response?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Thank you councillor Seeburn. I'll just pick up on the, the enforcing ability of the condition. Obviously, it is reliant on the applicants complying with it, but it's also, in terms of monitoring it, we, we obviously can't be there all the time, but if, if we were to receive a complaint, we could easily enforce again, or investigate and enforce that condition, but we would be reliant on receiving a complaint, we can't be continually monitoring a site, but if it's brought to our attention, we can certainly ensure that it's complied with. I think Elizabeth has something further to add. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman, and just to give members a little bit of comfort, I've experienced the planning history on this site over a long period of time, and over, over those years, from time to time, there have been concerns raised by the community about possible works that have been carried on, or things that have been happening, and we have investigated and responded efficiently, and my experience has been that those matters have always been resolved satisfactorily. So whilst we are a responsive enforcement service, and we do rely on the, the community to alert us to issues, my experience has been that whenever those have been raised with us, we have explored them properly and investigated, and they have been resolved satisfactorily in planning terms, so I hope that gives you some comfort. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of more speakers, I wonder if I might just throw a couple of things in myself. I think it's difficult, really, what I have in mind, given that we are actually looking at the siting of additional caravans here, but it was mentioned that these workers who will be occupying these caravans have to walk to Godalming if they wish to go shopping, other than, of course, for soft fruit. I have actually tried, only the once, to drive down Tewseley Lane from the top of the hill. I found it very nerve-wracking, and given that I was doing it during the school rush hour, which was all wanting to come up the hill, I would never, ever attempt it again. But having to walk up that hill to Godalming on a very, very narrow road, no footpaths at all, I wonder really whether or not Mr. Kay might actually consider, or the company might consider, the provision of a minibus that could actually take these workers when they wanted to go shopping, and maybe even bring them back home. I appreciate we couldn't put that in as a condition, I wonder whether or not, again, we're not actually looking at this, although the, the times at which lorries do appear, whether or not there might be a voluntary restriction on when lorries appeared, perhaps not before eight o'clock, and not after six o'clock or whatever, but again, I wonder whether or not, as a demonstration of goodwill, whether or not the company, the whole Hunter Partnership, might actually consider some kind of means of restricting that. And finally, given that the development at the Milford Hospital site has now created the problem of lorries waiting to get into the site, with rumbling diesels affecting people living in the new houses on the development of Milford Hospital, whether or not there could be sufficient parking provided within the site so that lorries just go in, they do not stop, they do not wait on Tewseley Lane, they are all accommodated within the site itself. I for those Mr. Kay, Kay has possible means of mitigating some of the problems, obviously, that have occurred since the development on Milford Hospital, and perhaps this might ease some of the pain that residents there are experiencing from your very, very successful business. However, let me stop wittering on and invite Mr. Gray to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think my questions come out of some of those that have already been raised, and to me, this is an expansion, and it is an expansion. It is an expansion. They want the additional caravans, therefore, as a by-product of that, there will be more activity on the site. Whether that expansion has already occurred or whether it's in the process of occurring, it is an expansion, and I think it would be appropriate to put conditions in there or repeat conditions if they already exist on transport, on time of use in the day, very similar, I think Dunstfold Park was referred to, but I can't see that lorries should necessarily be coming up there at 10 o'clock at night as a routine. If there are lorries that are basically queued up, then they should do something about transport management in there in terms of making sure they don't do that. And I think it would be appropriate to add conditions in to give residents some form of assurances.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gray.
Mrs. Faraghewski. Thank you, Chairman. I can't see it in this report, but I was just wondering if I may ask officers, are there any conditions associated with previous applications that monitor noise and traffic movements? And if I can come back, Chairman.
Can somebody respond, please? I think we're working on it.
Sorry, thank you, Chairman. We're just discussing, apologies councillor Faraghewski for slight delay. We're not aware of that condition on that basis currently on the site, but what we've sort of taken away from that discussion is maybe the inclusion of a further condition that can pick up on, so sort of travel plan, update the current travel plan to take account of this, and we can pick up on, and we can add a couple more sections about hours of movement in and out of the site to be submitted to and agreed in consultation with, say, our environmental health team as well with regards to noise and controlling that. So I'd appreciate that there may not be one currently, but we could add that and update what currently exists to try and improve the situation, and we'd be happy to put some wording around that for you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. If I may come back, yes, that's what I was going to suggest actually, is because this is about expansion and it is about growth, and if we start putting conditions in there that cap vehicle movements, it's going to curtail growth. So I think it contradicts itself if we say we want growth, but we don't want extra vehicle movements, because the two go hand in hand. And I think there's environmental issues that are concerns me as well in terms of busing workers in from the various areas, that doesn't seem appropriate either. But I think conditions to help provide evidence needed to perhaps monitor noise levels and traffic movements would be very, very helpful, and I was just wondering if they could be added to the report as we see it here this evening. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dinesh.
Thank you. I just want to support the comments from my colleague councillor Gray about some additional conditions, I think is absolutely appropriate in this case. I just, one very quick question, and that's under condition five, where it talks about landscaping. I think we have all got experience of, it starts off being grown and it's all very nice, and after a couple of years, it all dies and it all gets left. You've put a period of five years, and I just wondered whether that was a statutory period or a period we'd set, because five years is not very long. And I just wondered why we'd set five years and not a 10-year period, so they've got time to grow and become established, and they have to maintain them for that period. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chairman. Sorry, looking at each other. And thank you, councillor Dinesh. The five years is a standard requirement to put it on in terms of a condition that we would regularly apply. You've got to look at the reasonableness of taking it beyond that. I mean, got to take account that it is in a rural location, and it's an agricultural enterprise, oh, yeah, agricultural enterprise, so by its nature, it has field boundaries and things along those lines. We would suggest or recommend against trying to increase that five-year figure. I appreciate the reasoning for it, but that is a standard approach to take and a reasonable approach to take in five years, and it gives you the opportunity to establish, and it also gives the opportunity to replant, to help it establish over that five years, which is considered to be an appropriate length of time to deal with that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Peter. Members, any further questions? Mr. Byham?
It's not a question, it's a comment really, and it's, and again, we're discussing things about traffic and transport, which is not part of the application, but clearly is affecting it. The development of Leithfield Park housing is coming towards the end. We have had a few comments and complaints from residents there as local members, and I presume they may have gone into the system somewhere, not necessarily into the planning system, but somewhere about things. Never heard complaints about this before in terms of transport problems. And indeed, the existing residents who were there, have been there for many, many, many years, haven't commented, perhaps because the vehicles don't affect them because they're not going quite that far, and I suspect that might be the case. But it's an interesting problem, we presumably would have conditions on the movement of vehicles and timing of vehicles that have been used for development of Leithfield Park, but we haven't felt a need in the past to actually put any form of condition or control on the traffic movements of this particular operation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Byham. Mr. Seeburn.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, this is a thought addressed to the officers. Councillor Gray mentioned, you know, the fact that controls are put on Dunstfold, and we manage the controls at Dunstfold and any potential breakage of those controls through a liaison group. Similarly, at Cranley, Brick and Tal, there's a liaison group. This is becoming a major project in its own right, and we've now got the Leithfield estate directly opposite, which wasn't there previously. And I'm wondering whether the officers might want to comment on this, is there any benefit in establishing a liaison group that would give the parish council an opportunity to bring up concerns, the local residents to bring up concerns? You've got the residual Milford Hospital operation directly opposite. It would give the parties involved in this general area an opportunity to talk to each other rather than having pitched battles at planning meetings every couple of years. It's a thought, and you might like to comment on that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Sims.
Chairman, if I could answer that, I think that is an idea that we could take away, councillor Seeburn, and give some thought to it. What I would say is the group, particularly the Dunstfold liaison group, grew out of a time where the council was receiving a great many concerns about alleged breaches of planning control, and it seemed a very effective, good use of resources to bring it together and have more regular discussions and collaboration to try and create a framework around resolving these concerns. What I would come back to, whilst I said over the years, there have been concerns raised, in my experience, this particular site hasn't been one where we have had so many complaints that we're looking for a solution ongoing to try and get to a collaborative framework like we have with Dunstfold. And in the interests of making best use of officer resources at this time, I would suggest perhaps that it wouldn't necessarily be something we'd be in a position to do immediately. But if we got to the point, taking your thought away, that this was something that members did want us to do, we could certainly consider it going forward. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Sims. Mr. Gray.
If I could come back, I think we mentioned earlier that there was a need to update the travel plan. I would certainly like to see that in as a condition or however it's appropriately covered. And I think that would be the point in which to perhaps produce a liaison group which is more local between the operator and maybe the parish council rather than necessary. And if it needed to take planning action, then they could escalate it to it, and that might solve your concerns over resources.
Mr. Chairman, we can add that to our thought process on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any further comments at all from Peter?
I just thought I'd come back, and I've just been thinking about the conditions and around the comments that councillors have made, a number of you. And we suggest it would probably be two conditions that we recommend that be added to this. One, a requirement for a travel plan which would update the current position, so that would deal with the movements to and from the site and encourage how the workers potentially will move to and from the site to assist with them. And the second condition in relation to sort of HGV vehicle movements, so requiring details of a number of likely vehicles to and from the site, days of the week of delivery, onsite parking and waiting facility, detail of that, and timings to be submitted to and agreed. And whilst we accept it's, there is to some extent an existing issue which we can't necessarily deal with, we accept that there is some expansion, so we feel it could be reasonable to apply that condition if you were happy with those two, so I'd seek your views on those. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. I am happy to propose those two additional conditions that have been suggested. Perhaps somebody might, thank you, Mr. Gray. Are we all agreed that those are added?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. No further comments, questions or anything then, ladies and gentlemen? We can move to, sorry, page two then of the update sheet and recommendation A, that subject to the completion of a section 106 agreement within two months of the committee date and conditions one and three, one and three to eight, and informatives one to three as set out in the report, and amended condition two as set out in the agenda update sheet, and those two additional conditions that we have just agreed, and referral to the Secretary of State, permission be granted. Can I see those in favour of that recommendation, please?
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and that's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Can we also then, ladies and gentlemen, move on to recommendation B, that if the requirements of recommendation A are not met, permission be refused for the reason given on the bottom of page two of your update sheet. Are we agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. I believe that completes our business for tonight then, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much. Have a safe journey home.